Smithville Board of Aldermen Meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Item number three on the agenda is a proclamation for Public School Week. Jeff Blumker from the school board was here earlier to receive that and pass on copies to the rest of the school board. February 21st through 25th is Public Schools Week. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Alderman Kebelski? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports. EDC, Anna, taking care of this one.
Thank you, Mayor. End of January, the EDC continues to go through the development incentive toolbox. So what we're going through right now, in January, we went over chapter 100 and chapter 353 decisions. As far as recommendations to the board on any further restrictions, EDC's decision was to not put any additional restrictions on chapter 103 353 and to continue as they are. Then also, after that, Megan Miller from Gemma Warren Bell, who is also with you here with us here tonight, went through community improvement districts, the education piece of that. And at our next meeting next week, we will go over decisions on any further restrictions on that incentive. We'll have that discussion and then we will go further on for education on TDDs, which is transportation development districts.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee was held on February the 8th. First, they went through the vendor payments in excess of $7,500. All the payments adhered to the city's purchasing policy. Bank reconciliation was completed on January 6th, ahead of the benchmark goals that has been set by the city. Outstanding checklist, staff continues to call and send emails to past utility customers to try to reduce the amount of the checks. They're still having trouble just finding people. Certificate deposits, they're reaching out to several banks to compare rates. Currently, the interest rates are not that aggressive, so retaining our CDs as they are to maintain liquidity and available funds for emergency was highly recommended. Budget updates, as you'll see later, I guess, first quarter, small but obtainable adjustments to current budget, 160K for classification and compensation. Unfortunately, the spire bill is going to be increasing everywhere, so the city is aware and be looking for ways to adjust for this increase. Utility disconnect discussion. The board received public comment regarding the severity of the city utility bill disconnect policy, and the city is already starting to evaluate the connection and how the thresholds for shut off compares and fees to the other cities. Staff has reviewed that and that will be updated and reviewed a little more tonight. Utility rate study, staff posted requests for qualifications for utility rate study. So they complete the rate analysis of the city's water rates, wastewater rates, impact fees, debt obligations, funding strategy for major capital improvements for the next five years. The submission process concluded, the staff will begin evaluating the qualifications of each firm that's been submitted, then start interviewing, eventually prepare selective qualification, selecting a qualified firm to present to the Board of Aldermen. Last was capital improvements discussion. Staff is currently evaluating the financial strategy for both Parks and Recreation, Public Works Facilities, and, as you heard earlier, the new police station building. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And you're next too with Parks and Rec. I can also give an update if you need to.
Okey doke.
Go for it.
Joint Parks and Rec Committee and the Legacy Fund Agenda was held on February 10th. The Parks Master Plan presentation was done with the completion of the Smithville Citizens' Day. As you heard tonight, the results have verified and approved for the vision of the Parks and Recreation Strategy Plan, and we are on target for what the citizens are requesting. Future plans such as Riverwalk Expansion of Heritage Park, Expansion of Smith Fork and Campgrounds, Campgrounds are going to be including a bigger playgrounds and skate park. That's all in the works in our strategic plan. Estimate to obtain all these visions is going to be about another $15 million. Current funding from the city will only provide about half of that funds. This is why the Legacy Fund Committee was so vital to the success of these visions and requests from our citizens. Some funding can become from grants, but most is going to be need from fundraising. For me, this is the first time to be introduced and listen to the members of the Legacy Fund Committee, and I personally would say to see the professionalism and passion they had to the goals that each member had. Discussions were made to determine what areas would be priority to start fundraising steps, and ideas were tossed around on possible fundraising events and timelines to reach the first targeted financial goals. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the City Administrator's Report. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything additional to report?
I just want to call your attention. The City Administrator's Report this week is pretty voluminous. There's a lot of information in there. I encourage you to take a look at that. But do you want to highlight the personnel update? We actually have a number of new employees who started between right around Christmas time to last week. And we currently with these hires bring to two vacancies in our police department, one in the street department and one in utilities. We also have a part-time position we're advertising to fill in the Parks Department. We provide an, excuse me, an update on our snow removal efforts in the last several storms, and wanted to let you all know we are preparing for response for later this week for another snow event. We do include information about the right-of-way maintenance communication to residents that are affected based on board action late last year. And there are a number of items included that highlight some development that's occurring around the community. I also want to remind the board members that by the end of the meeting tonight, if you could let Linda know if you're planning to attend the MML Westgate Dinner on March 24th at White Iron Ridge. This is a rescheduling of the January event.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven, bill number 2930-22. Alderman Cheveller.
Thank you. I move to approve bill number 2930-22, the initial zoning of Lot 24 Lakeside Crossings for the second read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
So this is it, right?
Is it, right, Jack? Done.
Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Cheveller.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall.
Aye.
Alderman Kebelski.
Aye.
Five zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Next item on the agenda has two separate readings. So number eight, first reading, a motion to approve bill number 2931-22. Alderman Yulidall.
Motion to approve, motion to approve bill number 2931-22, revenue study for Marketplace Tiff Issuance Emergency Ordinance sponsored by Mayor Boy. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And as mentioned earlier, Megan is here if anyone has any questions. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Kebelski.
Aye.
Alderman Cheveller.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Five zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance accepting the proposal from PGAV Planners LLC for a revenue study regarding the Smithville Commons Development and approving the contract for technical services between the city of Smithville, Missouri and PGAV Planners LLC.
Thank you. Now for the second reading. Alderman Yulidall.
Motion to approve bill number 2931-22, revenue study for Marketplace Tiff Issuance Emergency Ordinance sponsored by Mayor Boy. Second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Got it. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Cheveller.
Aye.
Alderman Kebelski.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall.
Aye.
Five zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance accepting the proposal from PGAV Planners LLC for a revenue study regarding the Smithville Commons Development and approving the contract for technical services between the city of Smithville, Missouri and PGAV Planners LLC.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Smith.
Motion to approve bill number 2932-22, fiscal year 22, budget amendment number two, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Alderman Kebelski. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Kebelski.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall.
Aye.
Alderman Cheveller.
Aye.
Five zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year 22 operating budget to add $547,205 to the expenditure budget and $813,000 to the revenue budget.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 10. Alderman Kebelski.
Begging motion to approve bill number 2933-22, awarding bid number 22-06, sale of city land, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Alderman Atkins, second. Thank you. We do have a few public comment. First one to sign up was Joel. Oh, he's online. Okay, there you go. Joel, can you hear me? You're on mute still.
There we go.
All right, so pursuant to public comment policy, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joel Trader, 1702 Northeast 197th Court in Smithville. I'm very concerned that this is a going to be a long-term problem for the city when we start selling off property that is already designated as a park to serve just one business in town. What's to stop other businesses from asking to get permission to buy other parts of the city parks once we set this precedence? I don't think in the long run that this is going to be a positive thing for the city because it takes away areas that has been used in the past for many other events other than the use by one business in town. I think this should be brought to the voters and this should be an item that is actually voted on, not just a survey that not everybody got a chance to respond to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Yulidall.
Sarah Yulidall, 408 Highland Avenue, Smithville, Missouri. Those of you that know me know that I have a passion to have a thriving downtown Smithville. I've spent numerous hours working towards and planning multiple community events with Smithville Main Street, Community in Action, and hosting events like Pet Stay Out and Movie Night. I want to see a vibrant downtown, but I do not want to see it at the expense of our residents and one of our most used parks. Last year alone, we had over 39 community events take place in the courtyard. While working on planning for an event this year, I was reminded that if the patio was in place on the east side of the stage, the west side of the stage would need to stay open for emergency crews to get through. So we will not have the ability to set up on the other side either. I have a great relationship with Humphreys and really enjoy having them in downtown Smithville. When we have community movie night, David always closes his garage doors so that he can continue to have his band play on the inside and we can hear our movie on the outside. We will not be able to close the doors on a patio that is right up next to our stage. CIA has also hosted fifth quarter this year in the courtyard. Fifth quarter is for the Smithville kids after the football game. This event went until curfew in Courtyard Park. I'm not sure how a full patio at a bar and grill at 11 o'clock PM on a Friday night will work with 150 of our Smithville kids playing in the park right next to it. I love the idea of an outdoor patio, but I ask that we think of a way to, a way for it not to involve losing part of our park. I think a rooftop bar, a rooftop patio would be great, or even behind the restaurant would be a great idea also. But being able to keep our park for our community is important. So what I ask for you as council is that you, your decision is what is best for everybody and not what is best for one, one building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. V. Brock, you're next. Johnny V. Brock, 6408 Five Corners Road, Smithville, Missouri. I was asked to come this evening by a group of concerned citizens in town who are unable to be here. First, let me say I support free enterprise. I support expansion. However, as one of the founding members of the Smithville Farmers Market and Makers Market downtown that utilizes Courtyard Park, I am strongly opposed to the sale of this property if it's going to close off the throughway for the alleyway and reduce access for vendors to be able to drop their goods and services in Courtyard Park. Secondly, I can see no benefit to the city by removing that throughway and stopping the flow of traffic through the alleyway. Additionally, my concern is that if you sell off that space, you are reducing and decreasing hampering access to EMS and fire protection, which I would think those businesses would want. Lastly, I guess my concern is is that the city just spent several thousand dollars retrofitting that curb and that entrance to update the streetscape. And I don't think there's any way you have got to return on your investment at this point. I'm not sure if the sale is going to cover those expenses. Lastly, I would encourage this Alderman Board, if the goal was to expand seating space at Humphreys, which I think is a great idea, I would encourage you to relax the rules and on the Courtyard Park when it's not being used for a special event and allow all the downtown restaurants the opportunity to have tables out there that they could service. Surely, they could agree that you can have this section, I can have this section. And if they were going to supply employees to go out to service that space, it would benefit both businesses. In closing, I would really like to ask the Alderman to seriously consider selling of that property and the impact it's going to have on Courtyard Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, board discussion. Alderman Cheveller.
Thank you. So I mentioned this before at some of our workshops and, you know, that once we sell this land, it is going to be almost completely out of our control. And so, and like what Sarah was saying, you know, when there's kids out there, I mean, Artistry Motion Dance Company, if they're doing a dance, you know, on the stage, and there's something going on, you know, at this new facility, I mean, I'm afraid that that's going to drown that out and we may not have a whole lot of say in fixing that. So I really think that we need to maybe look into something like a lease structure, if this is really what we wanted to do, and have something in that lease that made sure that wasn't loud during those types of events. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Smith.
So what about this notion of building another story above the restaurant, which would make it so it wouldn't take the parking area or that drive-through area? What is the feeling there by Humphreys and so on?
Structurally, the building won't support it. It's a foam roof.
There's no way to shore it up?
No. It's a big wide open space. It'd be very, I mean, yeah. We, I know we'd asked that before, but most of our downtown buildings weren't built that way. Any other discussion? Alderman Atkins.
I know the Main Street Committees reviewed this and it looked like they gave it their favorable review for selling of the land. I know the Parks and Rec looked at it as well. And to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong on that. I know I second the motion, but I have a feeling that we may need to look a little longer and harder at this because I'm really not comfortable with selling it per se. I like the idea like everybody else has of expanding their sales and increasing the park use for everybody, but I'm not sure if this is going to be the exact right thing. I know it's not an alleyway. And
It's not an alleyway.
But it is used by the city and the citizens. Thank you.
Any other comments, Alderman Kebelski?
I mean, through all this whole process, I've kind of have gone back and forth. I am for selling the property. I do feel it will be a benefit. It's outdoor seating for eating. I don't, don't know true Humphreys plans for like having bands out there or anything, but I think it's just outdoor seating. It's no different than people sitting outside on the other side of the sidewalk. They could be out there having fun. People who come outside to smoke from Town Tavern, they could be loud and boisterous during a dance recital too. So I think it's, I just don't know if that's a fair argument or a good argument. My personal opinion, but I just think it's just a good idea. I think it's going to beautify that whole section right there and bring more benefit.
Is my understanding they're going to build a roof or a patio, a second, two-story patio?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. Four-season patio, yeah.
Yeah. And again, I mean, I don't, you know, I think it would be cool and I think that it would be a benefit to downtown. I just, I just don't want the city to lose control over that land and not be able to stop something if we really needed to.
But wouldn't just our other city ordinances, noise ordinance, or anything else, just like with any other business?
I mean, I hope so, but we can't, I mean, long term, I mean, who knows what can happen down the road.
Any other discussion? Alderman Smith.
Is there a projected revenue that that could possibly, additional revenue that that could possibly bring into the city? As far as the taxes?
I mean, the sales tax is substantial on any of our downtown restaurants, but I mean, I think it, I don't know if they provided projections or not in the RP, no. Any other questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Nay.
Alderman Cheveller.
No.
Alderman Yulidall.
No.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Kebelski.
Aye.
Four one.
Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is number 11, Resolution 1026. Alderman Yulidall.
Motion to approve Resolution 1026, Authorization Number 96, Bridge Street Streetscape North.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Cheveller.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have one public comment, Ms. Sanders?
Hello, Alyssa Sanders, 11 North Bridge Street, Smithville. I am very excited about this project. Obviously, for being, living right there. I did have a couple of questions. Where could I find, or does anyone know where, if there'll be anything done to the sewer lines below the road? And is there somewhere we could find where they might relocate the water main utility for our property because it sits right in our front yard?
Chuck? Be part of the engineering, right? Be part of the engineering design, but, yeah.
We don't have a, well, this just selects the engineer at this point and we'll take a look at. I don't believe we have any water line, water main relocation. Storm sewers will be looking at, and we will check the sanitary sewer, make sure before we overlay it, if it needs to be insituformed or something like that. The project won't start until, I think the schedule says 23 bids. So, and we will be contacting all the neighbors and talking to them about the project, so I will get her name and contact information. I didn't catch you when she came up here. And we'll be in contact.
That's Alyssa, our Main Street Director.
Yes, so we will, we will be in contact with everybody.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open up to board discussion. Alderman Yulidall.
It's kind of a general practice when we've been doing the streetscape things to redo some of the, some of the important infrastructure. So hopefully that will all be addressed.
Yep. Get rid of the 169 spur signs. Yeah, drain cover, that's for sure. Yep. Anything else? All those in favor approving Resolution 1026, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Next item on the agenda is number 12. Alderman Yulidall.
Motion to approve Resolution 1027, award bid number 22-01, Camp Post.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Smith? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving Resolution 1027, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Good job, Matt, for putting this out to bid a couple of times and calling folks because I know it wasn't easy. Next item is public comment. I don't see any general public comments, so we'll move on to number 14. Unless something else came in, Linda. Okay. Maybe none. Number 14, discussion of utility billing. Do you want to do public comment first, or do you want to go first, Stephen? Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Smithville Board of Aldermen. Steven Larson, Finance Director. On January 4th, 2022, Board of Aldermen received public comment regarding utility disconnection policy for the city of Smithville. In response to that public comment, staff have prepared a brief staff report featuring research and information on the city's utility disconnection policy. The staff report specifically outlines the Board of Aldermen established policy, which is executed by the finance staff. This policy is found in the city's policy manual, which is available on the public website to view, and it specifically outlines the times and dates in which utility accounts may be disconnected. The staff report that's been prepared also outlines various facts and statistics regarding utility disconnection in the city. The information in the report includes the average number of disconnects each month in relation to the total customer accounts that we bill each month as well as the average residential utility bill following rate adjustments implemented in 2021 and our current disconnect threshold. The staff report also provides information regarding utility disconnection policy and disconnect fees for comparable cities around Smithville. Staff researched disconnection policy for 11 other communities comparable to Smithville, and the policies for these communities are in your report. With this information in hand, staff is looking for board direction on this matter tonight, given our previous public comment on January 4th and the research and findings that staff has presented in the report.
Thank you. Two public comment. First one is Melissa Wilson. You know the rules. You sat up here for eight years.
Yeah, I might know the rules. Melissa Wilson, 19507 Diamond Lane. I serve on the Finance Committee and we did discuss this utility billing during our February 8th meeting. I want to share, while I was serving as an Alderman, we did review our current policy that's in the policy that's in the manual and determined that the timelines that we have in there really cannot be adjusted due to preparing the next month's bills. I did read the issue in January had to do with a delay in third-party vendors from banks of getting those checks submitted to the city. I think part of that, that happened. We can't change that. But, you know, the postal system came out a few months back saying first-class mail could take longer than five days or roughly five days. It's not going to get there as quick as it used to. My recommendation to the board, some of you have heard me say this before, we need to focus on auto debit. The city offers that. I don't see any reason why we as a city don't push that more. I have been on auto debit since it was first offered. Never had a heat cup. It comes out on the sixteenth of the month. I don't worry about it. You don't run into disconnects or late fees. I think with the change in the postal system relying on bill pay through your bank to send a check is going to get harder and harder to make sure it's there by the sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, you're next.
Thank you all. I don't disagree with the with the woman who just who just spoke. The problem is your policy says that you'll take checks and my bank pays a check when I when I submit it and in December, when I got the water bill, I I immediately that day authorized my bank to send a check to you all that did not make it to your hands until December twenty-seventh, when my water was already shut off. And that's a problem. And your policy says that you will accept checks via USPS. And I did nothing wrong, but I was still shut off. That's that's the issue. And I think if you look at the policies for the eleven other places, and I want to thank the staff for absolutely spending time and and looking at what everybody else does. Because when you see that and you see that the majority of them will simply send in the next bill a termination notice. That that then takes care of the problem. There's there's probably forty days there, then thirty or forty days of a grace period as opposed to ten. That solves your problem, guys, and it doesn't cost anything other than just a small delay in the payment. And I get it, you know, you've got one, one point, one percent, one and a half percent of 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 the revenue is is disconnect. It's twenty-eight thousand dollars or whatever I think is what I read. That is negligible to to be able to just extend, put on the next statement, you're getting ready to be shut off. And then someone like me who is not babysitting their their bank account to make sure that my water bill was paid can can then look at that and say, oh, crap, what happened to that check? Why is why didn't it come through? And then and then the problem is solved. I did see that there was one recommendation of, you know, just changing the the threshold to a hundred instead of seventy-five. But guys, if the mean is a hundred and eight dollars a month, then you've got probably fifty-five or more percent of the people that that does not help. And it certainly would not have helped me. My bill runs about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Got a got teenagers and and a lot of running water in my home. And so so that would not solve the problem for me. The problem is every other, every other city around has a much larger grace period than the callous and rigid ten-day. I can be current on the sixteenth and shut off on the twenty-seventh, the morning of the twenty-seventh. And there's a problem there, Smithville. I I really need you guys to fix that and and I think we're on our way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Open up to the board. Alderman Chevler.
Thank you. So as far as the how prohibitive this would be, I mean, what what is the issue with pushing it back to the next billing cycle? That disconnect date.
Provide some assistance on this as well. The largest issue is the timeline in getting the bills processed. But a bigger, as Alder or former Alderwoman Wilson mentioned, the bigger issue is related to shut-offs and the timing there. If we have someone shut off and they come in to pay, we don't have the staff to be able to get back out to put their water back on. And we have a a longer period of time to be able to put those to turn to do the turn-ons as well. So we could potentially have water shut off on the morning, someone come in, pay, and we can't get them turned back on because we don't have staffing. And Stephen, I did a terrible job of explaining that. If you could explain that process better.
There's also, there's also time in which they're out raiding the accounts in during the shut-off period. And so if we extend that past, just like Cynthia said with the staff, I mean, that's where you run into a problem. So I think that in past, when we've evaluated this policy, that point has come up and that's why we've stayed with with the current way we've done these things.
How how are other cities doing this, though? I mean, some of them are going pretty pretty far out. I mean, some of them, I think I saw one was like, what, a hundred and twenty days or something like that? I mean, I I just, I I can't, it's not computing in my head why why we can't just have the shop the following month. And, you know, we're going to still going to have to have the same staff do the shut-off and they're going to still pay, right? That same and not get shot, turned back on right away.
Actually, you probably have less shut-off.
Especially for this issue that we're dealing with right now. I mean, the this comment, the comment from the gentleman that got up, that comment was, it was literally a a day or two late. Well, that would have been fixed and we wouldn't have to shut off his water and turn his water back on. So I I I'm in agreeance with with Chevler. I think that my recommend that we we change this to exactly the same way it would be thirty days plus ten or whatever. It's just going on the next billing, the 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 delinquent accounts next billing cycle plus ten days. Exactly the same thing, just adding thirty days in there or whatever whatever math that is, thirty, twenty-eight days or thirty days or twenty-nine.
I say with a thirty-day-plus timeline, it was is is common sense. Yes, I pay by auto payment also.
Right, so do I.
We can't make everybody, we can't tell people how to pay, so.
Right, I I and I did that because I I did get shut off.
Yeah.
I missed one of my three water bills. So I mean, there's there's a lot of.
But I like the idea of a thirty-day timeline myself.
Well, I mean, would would it be thirty days or it just be the next kind of similar cycle, but just you don't get shut off until the next billing cycle? So whatever, however many days that is, yeah. And then and then also I was I was thinking that, you know, and I saw a recommendation, you know, for the maybe the shut-off or their reconnect fee to be lower. But I mean, I think if we're going to go this route, maybe we should increase it. I mean, as as even more of a deterrent to to not get your water shut off and that way maybe whatever extra costs that that we have, I mean, we can recruit some of it that way as well.
I would like to look at the policy as far as, you know, the check being, yes, we do accept checks, but they still have to be by the, we need to be receiving it by your due date. Is there any way we can change the language that, yes, we can take it, accept it by mail, but?
Well, we still do. I mean, that's how that's how our policy is. We when we receive the mail, that's when it gets dated.
Got you.
So, yeah, so it might be that if my bank puts the check in the mail on Tuesday, but there's a delay and it takes seven days for it to get there and.
That comes down to the due date was Wednesday and it got sent out on Tuesday and it didn't get here till Thursday. So there's there's a big problem like they're saying with with mail and things like that these days. That's why I was saying, on your, if you don't pay it by your next billing cycle, you're subject to shut off. So it needs to be paid on that date or is there still grace before the hammer drops?
I guess that's my quite like.
With these type of problems with the billing.
With the mail, like, what if again it happens to that same person again the next, that's at what point do we?
At what point that that's, I think that's the question because if there's a continued reliance on the mail, do we?
I mean, we still have to. Everybody has to be held accountable. So you're you're in charge of your bills. Your bill has to be paid. If we if we extend this date, you've you've missed one because of the mail that shipped your 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 bill, your your payment. One month and it's a day or two late and you got your disconnect notice, you need to make sure that your bank is sending out and that we are receiving those payments on the due date or you're subject to disconnection.
Can we do autumn? I mean, like, you have to sign up for ACH auto debit? I mean, is that something we could talk about?
That's something that, you know, we'd have to explore with our legal counsel as well, but.
But before that, though, is there any reason why adding the other thirty days plus, I like this idea of increasing the, you know, the the fee.
Reconnecting.
Connected. Is there any reason why that wouldn't work?
I got.
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing, just from a financial perspective too, that we want to make sure is that our cash flow for our water and sewer fund works. And I know in the past that's justified a short timeline because we do operate our own utilities. You know, that's something we'd have to evaluate with that decision is, you know, how that cash flow would operate, so.
Cash flow would be just short one month, first month, right? And after that, you'd be.
Yeah, right. So you could you can imagine, I mean, if you had a lot of people who are practicing that way, that we could fall short on on revenues in that way, but we'd have to do more analysis on that.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have anything?
Is there any particular direction you'd like staff to pursue or or more work for us to do on that matter?
It sounds like the consensus is to look at what our cash flow would look like if we did change to a thirty-day-plus-ten policy.
Yeah, when you say thirty-day-plus-ten, let me make sure I understand what thirty-day-plus.
Past due, print other following bill that they're past due.
So it would be a notification that there's a delinquency and they'd be shut off in the following month.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that what everybody's thinking? Yes.
Yeah.
Billing cycle plus ten would sound would probably make it some clearer than mud.
Get your bank on it sooner.
Yeah, I talked to Central Bank and they're.
And we've had, we have had discussions with Central Bank and I believe that there are some, there have been conversations with other banks as well, so hopefully there is some attention to that. But because it is batch processing in a lot of instances that they're doing, those checks go out.
Yeah, Central.
Set times a month.
Central Bank has emailed us and made some technical improvements, which have allowed a lot of ACH electronic payments instead of issuing paper checks. But that doesn't guarantee that the rest of the banks used by our customers are going to be doing the same. You know, we're still getting paper checks from USAA and other other smaller banks like that, so.
Thank you. Next item, new business.
Man, if I could, one moment, just, we want to make sure we will put some language together to bring back probably in a work session rather than because we don't want to vote back. We'll schedule that then.
Sounds good. Alderman Chevler.
Thank you. For new business, I'd like to, well, it's kind of brought to my attention this week that someone was attempting to reserve, I believe, the courtyard. And I think another group had it like in like a hold on it. They fill out an application and I and I think that that based on the application, it puts a hold on it, even if they're not paying any of the fees. Does that sound right?
Matt, can you address the?
First come, first served type thing, but then if they're not filling, if they're not paying the fees and everything, they're just submitting an application. Is that holding the spot?
So your date isn't officially into the calendar until you've paid your fees.
Okay, so if so, someone else trying to get like, say, someone wants to reserve the courtyard and someone has an application already, but they haven't paid their fees, this person can come in behind them and take that spot if they pay their fees.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's not official until fees have been paid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's similar to like, we put in some tentative dates, like Larson's calls, who's been around for many years. Want to make sure that their date's on the calendar. If someone did, someone new come in, it's like, hey, you just so you know that there is, you know, one that's been here for for a long time, then most likely going to turn their application pretty soon, so. But again, it's not official to those. Yep.
Any other new business? You need any more clarification in the work session? Good. All right. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say no. Stand adjourned.